I call this meeting to order, and since everybody's here so early, the next meeting will be at 8:30. But it's real, it's good to get together and be able to have some conversation and laugh and share some stories, so thank you for joining us today. The first item of business that we have is to go into closed session, so at this time, I'd like to have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the open meetings law, so that we can establish material terms of proposed employment contracts. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we will adjourn and go into a closed session at this time. May I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, I would ask for a motion to extend the employment contract of the superintendent.
I made that motion, I'm sorry.
Not through? And the associate superintendents and executive staff, basically, until February 29th of 2024. Mr. Hudson?
I make that motion, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations to you, and happy anniversary to Barry. Next, I would like to ask for a motion to extend the employment contract of our school board attorney until February 29th, 2024.
Motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I thank you, Mr. Irwin, for the job you do for us. I know that people don't really understand all that you do, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we'll point out for the recording of this that there's no changes in the contract monetarily and any stipulations in there other than the term contract. Next is the naming of the Southern Elementary School project. Is that Mr. Myers?
It's Mr. Myers, and I think Mr. Anderson may be a color commentator in this process as well, and so...
Are you saying he's a colorful commentator?
That's right. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. In November of 2019, last year, we started construction of the new elementary school down in Stump Sound area off of Folkestone Road. You've been updated several times on it, and you know that's in progress, and we are still targeted for opening the school in August of 2021 for the school, for the students to go there. But one of the things that we have to be concerned about is when they start going to school, they would like to have a name for school. And so that's what we've been working on over the last several months. Some of the things that we've been doing, we'd like to present to the board, is we created a list of names, okay, and this was based off of some of the objectives that we wanted to consider, and one of them was the name should reflect the community, the tradition, and coastal heritage of the area. And the other thing that we wanted to focus on was the name should convey a sense of what's the Stump Sound Township is. And when we talk about Stump Sound Township, we're talking about, basically, it's a precinct that was established in 1869 by the county, and it encompasses Sneets Ferry, Holly Ridge, and goes all the way up over into the southwest area to a certain point as well. So anyway, when we looked at it, there were several names that were tossed about, and we started talking with some of the community members, and five names popped out stronger than the other names that came out at the time. It was Coastal Elementary, Folkestone Elementary, Southern Elementary, Stump Sound Elementary, and Holly Ridge Elementary. Once we had a list of names that were recommended or one of those people wanted us to consider, we began a survey, and we wanted to make sure we got as much community input as possible. And Mr. Anderson did a great job of getting out there and reaching out to the community. The JD News reported that we're looking for a name. We went out to the school improvement teams and got their recommendations. Channel 7, Channel 12, all of them put out reports on the process that we're going through and gave out the survey link that we had for naming the new school. So we put the survey out, and we kept it open for about seven, I believe, seven days. And in that process, we received 2,511 votes. And in your narrative, you'll see that the votes came out pretty much, that was Coastal Elementary had 586 votes, Folkestone Elementary 523, Southern Elementary 29 votes, Stump Sound Elementary 501 votes, and Holly Ridge Elementary received 797. One of the things that we did do look at, though, and we want to make sure that people know as well, is we also asked if they had any additional inputs on names. And staff at the Dixon Elementary School and some parents said they would like to see a continuation of the Dixon name in the new school as well. An example given would be Dixon South or some sort of derivative of that. We had about 40 votes for that right there, as far as the write-ins were concerned. But when we looked at the numbers, we also noticed that, because we wanted to make sure that we could allow as many community members to vote as possible, that there was opportunities for several community members to vote more than once. And we saw that happen frequently in this process. So what you saw when you look at these numbers is you're seeing a general feel for what the community wants for the name, not a specific number. Couldn't say, well, actually, this one had more votes than the other one, but you had a good general feel for it. It's very similar to what we did with the town exchange the last time we named. We got a good feel for what the community was looking at. And once we started looking at the numbers a little bit more and started calling out some of the repetitive votes, two areas came up pretty strong, and that was Coastal Elementary and Holly Ridge Elementary. The others were, received additional, had strong support as well, but those two had a little bit stronger support. So when we look at the two names, Coastal Elementary and Holly Ridge Elementary, a couple of things came out about it, and also for the other names as well. We start, when we talked to the community members, an example given would be current Everett. When we talked current Everett stuff, because he's been a longtime member of the community down in the Stump Sound area, he said, one of the things we want to look at is when we start naming a school, if we start naming it for a specific community, at that point in time, others may take offense because we didn't name it after them, and this school was going to represent more than one community. And so that's one of the things that we were looking at, and we got that same feedback from other members of the community as well. It wasn't just Mr. Everett. And so after looking at that, and looking at the numbers, and calling out everything, the staff was in agreement, and also staff was in agreement at that point in time, we decided that Coastal Elementary would best serve the student body down in the coastal area, in that area. And one of the reasons why is that basically, in that Sneets Ferry, Holly Ridge, Stump Sound Township area, what we're looking at is coastal environment, and it also represents that fairly well. And it also represents the heritage that all these different communities have in that area. One thing I would note, because it was brought to my attention, is in New Hanover County, two counties over, there is a Coastal Preparatory Academy. It's a charter school that's in New Hanover, and so some people said, well, there'd be a confusion in the name, because you had Coastal Preparatory Academy in New Hanover. At that point in time, when we looked at it, we didn't really feel like that was going to impact us that much. So at this time, what we're doing is we're asking the staff, I mean, the board, to consider naming the new Southern Elementary School Coastal Elementary School, or any other name that they would like. If the board wants to take action at this meeting, we can do it. If not, we can also present it at a later date.
So for the board, first, I'll ask if there's a motion to consider naming the school Coastal Elementary. For a motion? If I don't hear a motion, then I'll move on. Secondly, is there a motion to suggest another name for the school?
We'll discuss it after we do the motion?
Right.
I'll make a motion for Coastal Elementary.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Nothing's going to discuss.
Let me say this, because I was privileged to teach and work in that area for 17 years. You're talking about an elementary school that is sitting on this site. You've got Folkeston, you've got Holly Ridge, you've got kids from Sneets Ferry, to name it one of the, and Dixon, you name it one of those, it's really going to be a problem for the other groups. So I think Coastal is a really good fit for all of them.
I'd like to know a little bit about the procedures. Is this the same procedure and the same instrument that we used when we named the other two schools?
No, sir.
Okay.
I can speak to that, Mr. Hayes.
Please.
What we wanted to do in this process was obviously we wanted to gather feedback, and we didn't want to incur any other cost for an additional program, so using existing technology that we had throughout Office 365, we created a form, and the result that you have there, the colored charts that you've got, this is the results, and this is what we see on the dashboard as the results come in. So we did not buy another product or enter a contract with anybody to do this process. We kind of ran it in-house. So the numbers that you see there are the ones that came in, so there's the raw number of votes that Mr. Myers had included in the narrative. We had about 121 that wanted to make an alternate suggestion, so there were some responses there. On the second page, we did black out some of that information that had some personally identifiable information, some, it puts the name or the information of the last response, so we just blacked that out, so for the record, the document's here. The other information that you have there, the nine pages of alternate names, those were also from the spreadsheet, so as the results come into the form, it populates an Excel spreadsheet that then you can go through and manipulate all that data and not analyze it in particular what you have. The thing I'd like to point out, and Mr. Myers mentioned this about the multiple voting, the way that this process is run, the way this is set up, unless you limit the voting to only people that have access to our Office 365, where meaning they have to log into their Office 365 account, you can't limit the number of votes. If you do that, if you limit it to that, then you can have them only vote one time per email address when they log into their account. So trying to get the largest amount of feedback that we wanted, getting it as an anonymous response made it pretty simple. But the charts that you have in the back of that is just simply a graph of the completion times for each of the responses. This was a fairly quick survey. If you didn't want to offer an additional name, you could go in and click Coastal, submit, Coastal, submit, Coastal, submit, or Holly Ridge, or any of the other sources that were there. So the charts kind of track how many responses came in for a given name over a period of time. And if you notice in some of these, there are some areas where the graph is kind of flat right across. Those were areas where we found, in going back and looking at it, that there was a pretty quick response time between answers, less than about 15 seconds between each one, the likelihood of a bunch of people getting on, all of them approximately at the same time, and hitting it probably not very likely, so we can kind of rule out some of those, and some of those plateau areas are pretty easy. The southern one was kind of easy to look at, because there weren't a whole lot of responses for that, so that gives you a look of what it would be if it was, if you were looking at it kind of over a shorter period of time, less responses. But that was what we were looking at here, and when you correct for that, and I went back and looked at that spreadsheet, and kind of eliminating responses that were 20 seconds or less apart, the responses come out pretty much the same as Mr. Myers has presented in the narrative. There was no substantial change to any of the numbers that were reflected through the votes that we received through the process.
So we normed the process, basically?
We could. We didn't, the numbers that you have in the narrative there are the raw numbers that came in. We could go back and norm it and take a look at it and pull out those extra responses, but doing a quick front-of-the-agenda math this morning, looking back through it, the responses came out pretty much the same.
Was Ed, well, we came up with a recommendation of Coastal. Was that as a result of the reflection of the community, or was that a reflection of what staff thinks that after your manual norming of the numbers and smoothing out those curves, is that how we came up with it?
Well, taking a look at the numbers, what we found with Coastal, received 586 votes. There were approximately 195 votes that were 20 seconds or less apart. Takes it to about 391 in terms of the numbers for Coastal. And of the other four, those numbers pretty much held out to be the higher of the four.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Those numbers held out to be the higher, what do you mean by that?
That was the highest of the, other than Southern, taking that one out, which only had 29 votes overall, that was the highest of the four top names that were submitted through the poll and through the survey.
Coastal then ranked highest in overall after it was normed?
Yes, sir. It was higher.
I like the idea that it's indicative of the entire community, because that school district extends to Maple Hill, to High Hill Road in Verona. It's a huge district, and that way, you're not leaving out the other communities as well.
Madam Chairwoman, I think you exactly right. It's almost like a regional school. It's such a spread-out area, even though it's beginning to have more clusters now because of the influx of personnel associated with the military. It is truly a regional thing, so we may want to think about more of a regional kind of name, because I do believe it could present a problem if we get too localized and start naming it after a specific...
Well, you have all those communities there.
Yeah.
Holly Ridge, Folkeston, Turkey...
Turkey Creek, yeah.
How do you name it after one? It's offensive to the other folks, so you have to be careful with it.
I agree.
Other comments?
I think, yeah, the invitation to recommend the name came from everybody in the county, because if you go through the...
Yeah, I did.
The names that were submitted, I mean, it's from A to Z, so, but I put great value on those first light current, and I'm sure you've got others who were born and raised there decades ago who really know the community. It really, I think this reflects, and I'm always leering about the American Idol style of voting.
Right, yeah.
I wish we could do that in the local...
We didn't charge for that. We didn't charge, sorry.
There was no cost. But I agree.
Madam Chairwoman, I may say one thing, too. And one of the things that was a benefit of this voting process was that we did receive a lot of additional names that could possibly be used for the future, for the naming of the future school off of Highway 25824, the Catherine Lake Elementary School right now. So we can look at this, and this gives us a starting point going forward for some of the others. Example would be Patriot Elementary, or some of these other school names that we could actually go out there and canvas the community as well.
Could I make a suggestion, and we wouldn't do this again, that we spend a little extra money maybe, and use an instrument that they can only vote one time? It's tied to either an IP address or to an email address, so that we don't end up in a situation where we have to set down a norm, the numbers that the public has given us? Because if we're going to ask for the public's support to name a school, we've got to rely on that, but we also have to rely on the fact that the public isn't sitting there, like you said, on the keyboard, and every 20 seconds hitting another for the same school, so it skews the numbers.
If I may add something, one issue with that is if we want to take into account staff members voting, all, everybody inside of our system will show up as one IP address.
Yes.
Because we only have one public-facing IP address.
But they all have, but they all have a separate email address, right?
Right, but it would be more likely tied to IP.
Well, let's draw back while we're here. That's something we can handle at a different time.
So a couple of thoughts, if I may, before we go further. I agree, if there's a, if there's a way, a software way, that we can get the vote into one vote per IP address or something, that's great. When I came in, I mean, I was looking at Holly Ridge Elementary at 797, not understanding, you know, the smoothing that we had to do. If I understand correctly now, if Coastal has more votes, once we take out all responses for both Coastal and Holly Ridge that were less than 20 seconds apart, then Coastal comes out on top from a public perception. I would like to say this, that, yeah, it is a regional school. We also have attendant zones for our other elementary schools that are named Richlands Elementary, Swansboro Elementary, Jackson McCombs Elementary, that far exceed past the municipalities of those areas as well. And so we do have, you know, decades upon decades of history, naming schools after municipalities. Of course, in this instance, that school site is not yet, at least, inside the municipality, so that is a material difference. I don't know how much people would be offended by the name Holly Ridge Elementary School, but in any event, I mean, both Coastal and Holly Ridge are good. I do think that if, you know, if we can get some way to get those votes, so that we have a truer number of votes, that would be good, because I really was looking at a 36% greater response rate for Holly Ridge Elementary over Coastal, and public perception and their desire weighs strongly with me. Thanks.
Any other comments?
Just a closing comment. My general concern is that once this occurs, that the public is made aware of this process that read this name.
One more thing. We, when we went out, we told people that there were rules that we followed. Now, today, in our packet, there are multiple names for this school that are for a specific individual.
Yes.
People that have done wonderful things, great things, that are Onslow natives. I just want to reiterate that we are specifically not naming a school for a human being, alive or dead, because there were a lot of responses, and if, you know, if this goes out today's meeting, someone's got, they're going to say, well, why didn't you name it for this person? They were so deserving. Well, because we don't name it for people.
And in the form, Mr. Hudson, when, if somebody chose, the way it was set up, there were the five options that weren't available, and then there was a question, the question you see in the list there, would you like to provide an alternative name? If you clicked yes, it took you to another section of the form, which explained the criteria for selecting a name, which included the board policy about not naming it for somebody. So it was right there in the form, they read that and then go right through it.
Right.
So people may not have chosen to put that, or to take that into account, but it was, it was clear in the form that they could not be named after a person living or dead.
If there are no other comments, I'll call for the question. Is there, we've got a motion on the table to name the school Coastal Elementary. We've had a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Good discussion, too. Steve and Brent, thank you for that. And I know that people will be happy that we do have a name for it. Next is the Dixon Area redistricting, and I want to just take a moment and say that, you know, we had one presentation in the Dixon area, and it was attended by about four families, was all. The board may want to, as we're having this discussion, we'll get it on the table, we may want to upfront say that my recommendation would be, is that we may postpone voting on the redistricting plan itself, discuss it today, and present it at our board meeting on the 10th, so that the public will have another opportunity to come and to give their thoughts on it. So at this time, before we begin the discussion, could I have a motion to postpone that until the 10th?
postpone until...
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This is up before discussion, Steve.
That makes, that makes my job easier. Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, once again, we're going through a redistricting process, and before we start, one thing I would like to mention and reemphasize, this redistricting process right here is fairly straightforward for us, because we had Dixon Elementary School that had about twice the population that it was supposed to have. And so what we did is we took that Dixon Elementary School district zone, and we split it in two, and we did some minor tweaks to it in that process as well. So what you're looking at, for the most part, is going to be the Dixon Elementary School district sliced in two, so that way, one school, the new Coastal Elementary School will be taking over half of it, and the other half will be Dixon Elementary. But to start out with, some of this, I'll go through the first couple of slides very, very fast, because we've been through this before, but just a reminder, in October, the board approved the start of construction for the new Coastal Elementary School, and the school was going to be opened up in 2122 school year. As part of the process, we wanted to start the redistricting study as quickly as possible, because we wanted to make sure, and Dr. Collins emphasizes several times to us, and we're glad he did, is that we want to give the parents and the community as much time as possible to understand it and recognize that we are going to be redistricting because we have a new school coming. So while we're looking at the redistricting zones today, I mean, February 26th, and bringing it back to the board at a later time, they're not going to go into effect until August 2021. That's a year and a half away. So that gives the community and the parents plenty of time to understand that. Some of the key criteria that we considered was, we want to make sure that we load balanced correctly for the Dixon Elementary School. In other words, don't, I mean, when we do, we make sure we take enough students away from Dixon Elementary School, so they're not overcrowded and have to use multiple mobile classrooms like they have in the past. Also, we want to reduce bus times and traffic congestion, and we will by splitting that district into two pieces. Highway 210, as you know, we get constant concerns about traffic on Highway 210 over by Dixon Elementary. And I don't remember, we had a principal at one time running out there in the middle of 210 with us, and made stop signs, stopping traffic, so we'd get the kids, I mean, parents and kids out on 210. So we do have traffic issues over there, and this would help reduce that dramatically. And the other thing we always want to do is maintain the continuity of communities where possible. We don't want to break up a specific community into two different locations. You go here, and you go here. So these are some of the things that we look at on an ongoing basis. As far as the redistricting process is concerned, we use, we work with several points of data, and we have ORED, NC State, ORED, or ITRE come in and help develop the preliminary maps that we look at. Once we get the preliminary maps, then staff goes back and looks at it, especially transportation and also working with the school staff, principals, and showing the maps and say, okay, does this look right? I mean, are we looking at things correctly here, and how do we optimize it? And so we look at that. Once the maps are created, then we present the maps to the board. This year, we, I think we presented, gave the maps to you on February 14th. We also did public comment, and after that, a decision is made, and after all the comments and data is considered. Right now, what we've done is we have created the maps, and school administration, transportation, and ORED have already assessed them. Board of Education has received the maps, and we're going to have additional information presented to the board today, so that we're better understanding. And the parents and community have had one community meeting already. As Ms. Thomas mentioned, we had about four or five parents come in during that meeting. What I would like to mention, though, too, is that we did reach out to the community in general and targeted the community as well. With the phone, with our phone system, we targeted all the students and parents for Dixon Elementary School, let them know that we were in the process of doing this, and that we were going to have a community meeting. Channel 7 and Channel 12 also got the information, and I believe JD News, Ms. Piven actually gave us a front page above the full report on that as well, what we were doing. So we have been reaching out to the community in this process as well. And during this time, we also opened up a link in an email, so anybody that wants to provide additional comment, they can provide additional comment or express additional concerns. To date, we haven't heard anything from anybody off of that email account so far. When we look at the proposed solutions, or proposed, and excuse me, I didn't make the corrections like I should, but proposed Coastal Elementary redistricting scenarios, when we're looking at this, we have three scenarios. And this summary sheet right here that we're looking at, and what you see is in the tan area, when the blues start, that's the Dixon Elementary School district that would be presented in 2021, August of 2021. The pink area with the Simon color with scenario one is basically the other section of the current Dixon Elementary School zones, okay? The one exception to that, we'll talk about a little bit, is I've got five students that, for transportation purposes, it was more efficient to bring them into there from Southwest Elementary. And then... for transportation purposes, it was more efficient to bring them into there from Southwest Elementary. And then what you see in the, the blue is another scenario, scenario two, where we bring in additional thirteen students from Southwest Elementary. And then scenario three is where we would actually be, um, taking, taking the district all the way up to the feeder zone for the middle school and the high school. And that would impact fifty-one students at Middleview Elementary. So, when you look at scenario one, okay, what we're, what we're looking at is, in the blue stripes, that's the old Dixon Elementary School. And that's the, that's the district that we're looking at there. And the greens, and the green stripes with yellow star, that's the new Coastal Elementary School. And you will notice one thing to take note of, is, um, the separation between, uh, Dixon Elementary and Coastal Elementary is going to be Highway two-ten. And if there's communities that are right off of Highway two-ten, they would still go to Dixon Elementary School. It, that, it goes all the way down until you reach the bridge off Highway two-ten towards North Topsail Beach. And once you're on the beach...
Could I interrupt you for just a minute? When you say on two-ten there, are you talking about either side of the road or two-ten?
Either side of the road or two-ten.
Very well.
And then when, when you get down to the beach, though, uh, the new southern, new Coastal Elementary will be, um, will be providing transportation, uh, for those areas. One of the reasons why we didn't take it and cut it straight down, uh, on the, on the coast is for transportation efficiencies. Didn't make sense to have mo-, uh, multiple buses going down the beach, when one bus would serve the whole, the whole area. The other thing you'll notice, when you look up towards the, um, northwest side, um, we did add five additional students from Southwest Elementary, and that's for the Paget Run and Hoz Run Road. Um, that was more for transportation efficiency purposes. Uh, what we're looking at with five students going from Southwest Elementary to the new Coastal Elementary, transportation times are actually the same. It'll be forty minutes going either to Southwest Elementary School, or forty minutes going down to the new Coastal Elementary School. And it, it was just more efficient with the, with the number of buses we have to actually utilize, uh, to, to embrace those five students and bring them into a new school.
Steve, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you.
No, please do.
Those students that are leaving, that would be leaving the Paget Road to go to Dixon, uh, they'd be leaving Southwest to go to Dixon, would they go, leave Southwest to go to Dixon Middle if they stayed and Dixon High School?
That's right. All these, all these scenarios that we're presenting to you are, are still within the middle school and high school feeder zone for Dixon Middle School and Dixon High School. So, historically, with the Dixon Elementary School district as is, it didn't go all the way up to, uh, Highway fifty-three, Burghall Road.
Mm-huh.
And, but Burghall Road is the point where, um, the feeder zone ends for the middle school and high school. So, all these zones, all these scenarios we're here, will actually fall into the feeder zones for the middle school and high school as is. So, in other words, we're looking at it this way. I've got five students that we're looking at bringing from Southwest Elementary School down into Coastal Elementary. Well, when they were, when they reached sixth grade, they were still going to be coming down to Dixon Middle School anyway, and Dixon High School.
Can I make a suggestion that when we do the public presentation at the board meeting on March tenth, that we include, uh, Middleview and Southwest school districts in total on a map, so that we can physically see where those schools are located, where they're currently, because when you say that the same distance from those five students are back there, these maps don't reflect that. It's very difficult for me to comprehend that.
Yes, sir. And one of, one of the things we have to look at, too, is the populations that we're serving in these areas as well. Because in Southwest, Southwest Elementary School, there's a lot of, um, students in, in areas around there, so there's a lot more frequent stops. Here, there's fewer stops, and so, there's actually just a longer run times, but it's quicker, quicker to get to and from school.
You said there's five kids in the northwestern, northwestern pocket. The distance from their house to Southwest Elementary is about the same?
The time to...
Time travel, yes. Time.
Travel time is the same.
And see, the complaints that I get are not related to time travel. It's related to distance. Why are my kids going all the way down to Dixon, when we live all the way up here in this area?
We, I'm guessing, haven't been on hearing panels before. It's just a vast, large tract of land out there. And you can't tell parents where to drop anchor. It's just, this is where I'm, where I live, and you sort of call it the border.
Does Angola go to Southwest or Dixon?
Angola goes to Middleview right now.
Where?
Middleview.
I know that you don't want to get this far in the weeds, but I think it would be important to know, are those five students that would be traveling to the elementary, are they in fourth grade or fifth grade?
I would, I would have to go back and get the numbers. I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, but we could get that.
They're going to Dixon Middle, yeah.
Right, they'd be going to Dixon Middle. I mean, that would...
Right, they'll be going to, they'll be transitioning. And one of the things to remember, too, we've mentioned that, um, August twenty-twenty-one is when the redistricting would take place. So, this would impact students that are in third grade.
Mm-huh.
Okay? Kindergarten through third grade right now, and any students coming up, uh, up into kindergarten. So, from third grade, I mean, from three-year-olds up to, to, uh, third grade, is the students that would be impacted by that right there. Um, but then, once they reach fifth grade, they're still going to be doing the same bus rides.
Well, a year from now, a year from now, we're going to be doing the same scenario for Catherine Lake area.
Yes, sir.
All right.
We may have a few more meetings besides one on this one.
Well, I understand that. But, but my whole point is, I have a difficult time, and I'm getting a little ahead of the game, because you're going to go into the other scenarios a little bit here. But as I look at the overall scenario picture here, we know if that's coming online a year later. Are any of the decisions we're going to make today going to doubly affect the students that are currently in this area, that we might have to, again, move them someplace else?
Well, we won't be making that decision today. We're going to have that discussion.
I understand, but I don't want to make a decision today. We have to turn around and move the families again a year from now.
And that's a very important thing to note. Uh, one of the things that we've always tasked, and tasked and had as an objective that I didn't mention earlier, is that we don't want to move students more than once. If we have to redistrict them, we don't go back and redistrict them the next year. So, anything that we put together right now was looking at, hey, this is a one-time, one-time event. We don't go back two or three years unless some, something happens that is out of our control.
Okay.
I don't know, well, I, you go ahead, I'll say something later.
Yes, ma'am. Now, scenario two is very similar to scenario one. The only difference is that, uh, we brought, we brought it up to William Gagnes Road and, uh, Hardy Graham Road, um, is, is the next area. And in that process, we added additional thirteen students from Southwest Elementary School. Why that's important? Five students from Southwest Elementary School doesn't impact a classroom. Eighteen students is a classroom. And Southwest Elementary School is overpopulated as well. They have thirteen modulars right now. And we're looking at possibly putting more modules out in the next, next, uh, year or so, just for HB ninety, for that classroom size reduction. So, that's the reason why we looked at, um, scenario number two, is because if we brought in additional thirteen students and brought, brought it up there, then at that point in time, that would relieve, take one classroom away from Southwest Elementary, would be more of an impact to help Southwest Elementary School.
Yeah, I, I think it's important, Steve, just based on what you said, Mr. Myers, pardon. Um, is that, you know, what we're talking about now is not the solution for Middleview Elementary School and Southwest Elementary School.
No.
This is a Dixon Elementary School solution, pretty much only, because of the horrendous, tremendous number of kids we've got there. Uh, I, I, I agree with what Mr. Williams said, and Mr. Myers, what you've just said. What we do now cannot affect another, affects the same family twice in two consecutive years. But I think that there's, this shows there are so many kids at Middleview and so many kids at Southwest El. We've got plenty of kids to go around to fill up that new Catherine Lake area elementary school. We don't have to worry about that.
There you go.
Yeah.
As far as bus times for these areas, too, it's very similar to scenario one. Um, average bus time right now is about forty minutes for, for those students. And if they go down to the new Coastal Elementary School, it'll be between forty and forty-five minutes.
I'll even dig faster buses.
Well... I am not saying that.
Let me just interrupt for just a real quick second, Terry.
Yes, sir.
You know, we talk about the bus times. That's important for our student, our student day.
Yes, sir.
From a parent's perspective, though, if you have a sick child, and they're going to Southwest, and you live in the Southwest area, it's a five-minute drive over to the school, maybe to pick them up.
Yes, sir.
Or a non-rushout, or it's a thirty-five-minute drive to get down to Dixon to pick them up.
That's right. And, and unfortunately, there's, there's, and not talking about this district right here, but, uh, there's areas that we have concerns that you may, I mean, the district lines are extremely close right now. If you look at, um, if you look at Southwest Elementary, we've extended that line almost to the, um, almost to the eastern side of Southwest Elementary to go to Blue Creek, because we have so much population there. But they're, they're a mile away from, mile, two miles away from Southwest Elementary, but they're going to Blue Creek. But we have that just because of the capacity concerns that we have. Scenario number three, this is a little bit different. And, uh, this is one where, um, we're actually taking, taking, uh, the district line all the way up to, uh, Highway fifty-three, Burghall Highway, and William Gagnes Road. What happens there is, uh, we actually incorporate, uh, fifty-one students from Middleview Elementary, who are at capacity right now, and, um, and bring them down. This one right here, I would not recommend. And we'll go into other discussions later about that as well. But, um, a couple of things to note is that the travel times, it'll be forty-five minutes going to Middleview. It'll be an hour going down to Coastal Elementary. So, travel time is going to be, uh, increased. Not only that, we do know, and like I say, I'll mention this going forward, um, that we do know that MarSoc West is coming, and we have some additional growth that we have to plan for. So, by adding that additional fifty-one students, well, we're not sure how, how everything's going to play out when, when the Marines come, come down to, from MarSoc West, is, uh, something I probably wouldn't recommend right now. When we balance the student populations, we need the numbers, just the numbers now. Okay? Um, we, we talk about this quite a bit, but, um, what I did is, I broke it into a couple of things, capacities. Each school has capacities, and this is based on, um, what the capacities are going to be in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Okay? So, for Dixon Elementary, the operational capacity, if you remember, operations, brick and mortar, with, uh, with like a five percent factored for transitional state of, I mean, the transitional, um, number, amount of transition we have in the elementary schools. Then you have campus capacity. That's where we use the mobile classrooms to help address additional, uh, capacity concerns we have. Dixon Elementary right now has six hundred eight, I mean, in twenty-one, twenty-two school year, will have six hundred eighty-four student capacity. Campus capacity would be eleven hundred and twenty. And that's because they have twenty-three mobile classrooms. Okay? Our current enrollment, if we factor in the Dixon Middle School fifth grade, is almost thirteen hundred students, twelve hundred and ninety-three. So, when we look at the different scenarios, if, each of the different scenarios, scenario one, scenario two, and scenario three, we're basically almost cutting this in half. I mean, we'll cut, it's a little over, so it'll be six hundred and thirty-five students, uh, projected for Dixon Elementary School going forward with each of these scenarios. The new Coastal Elementary School will have a capacity of eight hundred and four students. And if you look, what we have for the enrollment scenarios is six hundred and sixty-three, six seventy-six, and seven twenty-seven. So, each, with each different scenario, we see an increase in, uh, student population for the school. Southwest Elementary School, you can see that, um, we have eight hundred and twelve students currently, and our operation capacity is six hundred and sixteen. And with the thirteen modulators that are at Southwest Elementary School right now, we have nine hundred and twelve. With that nine hundred and twelve, we also have, uh, that we don't factor in that as pre-K. Pre-K has three classrooms there, too. So, that, that brings it down to pretty close to being at capacity right now. Uh, with scenario one, we drop it five students, then we drop it to eighteen students for scenario two and scenario three. Middleview Elementary has, uh, a capacity of six eighty-six. We have current enrollment of seven fifty-two. And the only, um, scenario that would impact that would be scenario three, we bring it down to seven oh-one. Right now, with the modulators that they have in place, um, they're, they still have, um, capacity.
And when we do, uh, the new Catherine Lake school, are we anticipating drawing from just Middleview and South, Southwest Elementary?
No, sir.
Or also Ritz Science?
No, sir. It's going to be a mulch, it's going to be a multiple workshops in this process. Because what we'll have to look at is, optimally, we, we put the school in the ideal location based on all the population concerns. But at the same time, we have a lot of population or capacity concerns in different areas. Middleview is at capacity or just above capacity in Southwest. Carolina Force, which even, even though it's on the other side of Rhodes Town, it's out of capacity, and it's, it's severely impacted as well. So, what happens if we start pulling, um, students from stateside into the new school? Then we can bring in some, then some of the students from, uh, the capacity we have at stateside can come in from Carolina Force. So, there's going to be a domino effect in this one. We will have multiple workshops in this, in this conversation. This, we're starting on it right now. As a matter of fact, um, ORED is doing, is, uh, going to be commencing a land use study in March, I mean, coming up. And we're starting the interviewing process. We'll be scheduling interviews. And we're going to be updating the charts again. And so, sometime next year, we'll begin, early next year, we'll begin, or not begin, but we should have some preliminary maps in place that we could start banging around.
But it will definitely help Southwest Elementary and Middleview.
Yes. You didn't want to hear that one.
I did not want to hear that. I totally expected that. I mean, it's the way that other schools positioned. It's, it's in the center of where we've had tremendous growth. One Eleven, Bannerman Mill Road, Heritage Elementary, Stateside Elementary, Jackson Commons Elementary. I mean, it, it's, it's going to be like you say, Mr. Myers.
And it's going to, that growth's continuing.
It is, it is. And, and as a, as a side note, you know, this is, this is the cost of growth. I recently was asked a question about, in, in another life, about utilities. And, uh, you know, about growth and utilities. And in, in the utility business, when, when development is approved, they get utilities legally. They get utilities. Well, when, when our community is growing, and, and we have, as will happen, immediately around that new elementary school on Highway two-fifty-eight, uh, there will, I, I can see in my crystal ball, be an enormous housing development. Right off of two-fifty-eight, there's sewer available, of course. There's road construction that's being done. Uh, so, not only will we be looking at, at that domino, but when we do that one, the, the intense growth in that land use plan that's going on will show another whole housing community right there.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's the cost of growth.
So, some of the key items we've discussed so far, just kind of reiterating what we're doing, is reducing the overcrowding at Dixon Elementary School, which helps with, uh, traffic congestion. And it reduces the need for mobile classrooms. Right now, we have twenty-three, um, now, will we get rid of all the mobile classrooms? We have some pre-K, uh, classrooms out there right now as well. And we probably have to keep one or two just for potential growth in the future as well, because one of the things that's coming up is MarSoc. Okay? Um, last, last report we got was nine hundred Marines would come in from MarSoc West. And they would probably be more in the, in the stump sound area, as far as where they're going to be moving. When you look at the numbers, that probably equates to anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred students, K through twelve. So, based on demographics and prior things, we're probably going to be looking at a hundred and twenty, hundred, between a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty students that would be elementary school students. Where would they go? The majority of the growth that we see would be in Coastal, in the, for Coastal Elementary, but there may be a handful of students that would still be in the Dixon Elementary School area as well.
Mr. Myers? Mr. Myers, actually Chairman Thomas and several others have had this discussion. You just said nine hundred students.
I'm sorry, nine hundred Marines.
Yeah. No, I'm sorry, not students. You said nine hundred Marines.
Right.
What, what I've heard is sixteen hundred Marines. So if your numbers are based on, are they based on nine hundred or sixteen hundred for students?
Based on nine hundred right there for students right now. Now, we have had ongoing conversations with, with Julie Fulton and the base about the growth, and it changes. Because two months ago, it was sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred Marines, and eight hundred per, per year in twenty twenty-one, eight hundred, twenty twenty-two, eight hundred. Then we just got, about three, four weeks ago, we got reports that it was going to be nine hundred. And in our conversation now, they said, well, it may be seven hundred each year. So it's floating.
Okay, so seven hundred or nine hundred or eight hundred each year over the years is different than nine hundred.
Nine hundred, three to four weeks ago, we reached out, contacted them, they said nine hundred for two years combined, four hundred and fifty per year.
That's not the information I was.
That's not the information that Dr. Collins and Mr. Hudson and I received.
And that's the information we see when we talked with Ms. Fulton at the time, and she's going back and following up on it. But we, we know it's a floating, it's a floating number, and that's one of the things we say is approximate. We don't know what that number's going to be.
One of the things I would recommend is we don't get too far ahead of it. We have to maintain it. It would have been that many years ago that this area experienced a tremendous growth in building, because the base said that they were going to do something, and then come through with it. It had a ton of houses built out there, but the people didn't follow along. So we know this is going to happen, but we have to be flexible with it as well.
That's right.
Question?
Yeah. Let Barry say something first.
So it's, it's good that we're waiting to make this decision on March tenth. Tomorrow, I'm scheduled for a meeting with Sharon Russell and Julie Fulton to discuss this very thing. There has been a lot of numbers thrown around, sixteen hundred, nine hundred. So hopefully, after that meeting, we'll have a better understanding of what they think is, and again, it's still a projection, I believe. But we do know that a number is coming. We don't know what that number is. It will be a big number. So I don't know that we're ever going to get a, this is exactly how many Marines are coming, I don't think we're ever going to get that, but we'll get a number that's a little bit closer, and I'll have that meeting at eleven o'clock tomorrow. So I can pass that along to Steve, and then by March tenth. I think what we've heard here is, we probably want to stay away from scenario three. But scenario one, scenario two is kind of still on the table. Maybe with this additional information that I'll get tomorrow, it might help with narrowing those two down.
I would feel more comfortable knowing that the information is coming out of the general's office instead of coming from just one of our liaisons.
Yes, ma'am. And one of the things that we, we have asked Ms. Fulton to do is contact the general manager and get more clarification. Now, in that process, she hasn't been able to get the information per se, but I do know we had conversations this morning about this same topic, and she was going to be contacting Marsoc West directly and trying to get a better idea of what numbers that they're looking at. So hopefully, we'll have more clarification on what the numbers are going to be. We don't know for sure. One of the things that they discussed as well was the demographics of Marsoc West. Is it going to be senior enlisted personnel, or is it going to be the normal mix of enlisted personnel, E-ones through E-nines? That, that is one thing that they won't be able to provide clarification. What's important about that is if it's a lot of junior enlisted personnel, then that's not going to impact the growth as much as it would for senior enlisted personnel.
Well, Bob and I attended a meeting, and the general said it was going to be more seasoned and experienced enlisted men.
And that's what we.
Joe Ramirez said the same thing, and retired Colonel Scalisi said the same thing. So I feel like that maybe Barry's office or your office needs to contact Joe, who is the community liaison.
And that's part of the information.
Okay.
Sharon's more sure.
I have the same information, that mid-level, one battalion of Marines, sixteen hundred, eight hundred over two-year period of time each year, when they were mid-level Marines with kids.
Right. And I called Jeff to make sure that I heard the same thing, and that if he heard it, so.
And then we heard, and like I say, it's, it's in flux.
That's right.
No, that's fine. I think the clarification now, we first heard seven hundred, nine hundred, now sixteen hundred. Are they all new? Or like in two thousand and five, we were, I think, told, Mr. Hudson, you recall as well, big announcement down at the city chambers by Bob Dickerson about getting ten thousand. Were they new, or were some of them already here that are just being transferred, that may already live in the area? So that's, the clarification is one of.
And I agree, I think that's some of the clarification. And one of the things, when we mentioned the nine hundred as well, I think J D News reported it, we received information from different sources, and also, we went online and looked at their, their website for the military. They said it was nine hundred, and that was three or four weeks ago. That's when we started having the conversations with Julie Fulton about that as well.
But that's because they're closing one base in California.
Right.
That's not including the others that are going to be coming.
So in that process, that's why we need to get more clarification.
The other part of this equation that we haven't discussed is their tremendous amount of construction and the buildup. We've got a tremendous amount of contractors that are coming to this area. Some of them may or may not live in housing on the base out there, if they're buying a, a place for them to stay. They're going to be in our community as well. And I was told that that will happen over, up to a five-year period of time, based on construction. So we're, we're facing two major influxes of human beings that may have lots of kids in the next little bit.
Well, even if they had, even if eight hundred, half of them have one child, that's four hundred, that's a school.
Right. One, one question, in regarding, I think the recommendation right now is scenario Dixon Elementary is currently at twelve ninety-three.
That's including fifth grade at Dixon Middle School, yes, sir.
At fifth grade. And there's a good chance that they're going to grow another hundred kids twenty twenty-one.
We're looking, we would, we'd be looking at a hundred kids across.
Without Marsoc anybody, just?
No, that would be included, using the nine hundred number for Marsoc.
Okay. So, I mean, for next year, you said K five, but for next year, it would still be a K four school, right?
That's right.
So they're going to grow.
Another hundred.
Another hundred.
For next year, I would have to go back and.
Well, I think beginning of this year, like eleven forty, last number I heard, so they, I'm down at Dixon Elementary on Monday, there was a young lady with three kids, kindergarten.
Dixon Elementary School, we're looking at additional growth next year projected, and this is just a draft copy of it that we've, we've been working with, approximately fifty more students.
Fifty.
And then the next year after that, another thirty students.
Dr. Collins, when you get clarity, more clarity after another meeting, would it be possible to let the chair and the board know just what you find out? And I, I believe that those numbers that you receive, if, if we can verify with, with indoor manager what the county's getting, I mean, I know what we've gotten separately, but if, if those numbers change, the projected numbers of students in these scenarios, I would like to know that when we come back and consider. I'll tell you the other thing that I would like to have is, I know it's two years out for the next Catherine Lake school, but the decisions that we're going to make on the tenth is going to affect a lot of students one way or the other. And we know going into this that that's going to happen. It's going to be, like you said, a major domino effect. We're going to have to move students from here, move students over to backfill them and stuff like that, to relieve crowding in other schools there. I think it's important for the public to know that the decisions we're here making here are not in a vacuum. We understand that those other changes are coming.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we're trying to accommodate all of that in the scope of things.
Well, knowing, knowing that we don't know exactly how many students we're going to have, every school we've built in the last twenty years has never been, has never been under capacity. It really hasn't. I mean, Jeff, how many we built when you, you were here, and, and that other wave before you, you came, I mean, they've all been overcrowded. So I don't even know if I'd be comfortable voting on moving any of the students from Southwest or Meadowview. We can always do that later if we have to, but I think that school's going to be pretty much over capa, at capacity, if not over.
Yeah, and, and part of the reason that they've been over capacity has been our K-three class size reduction. So in addition to just natural growth, natural birth rates, and people moving here, we have legislative processes that dramatically change the capacities of our schools.
For, for the footprint of that school right there, the new Coastal Elementary School, if we were using the same capacity numbers that we had back in two thousand and fifteen, it would be about nine hundred and fifty students, nine hundred and fifty, nine hundred and sixty students. So it's a hundred and fifty student difference, just with the, with the state legislation going into effect.
Well, Mr. Wiggins and I, several weeks ago, thought we would go, look at, try to find a new sign for the, for the school. I mean, you ride up and down Coastal Road, it's just one huge development after the other, and they're all, the tracks around are big enough to put a school on. We, I think that's it, Paul. We just kept on going, and these are houses that will come, be popping up within a matter of months.
Yeah, I can tell you water sales are up.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, I think basically, we had talked about number two, then going back to March tenth, I believe that we're going to bring back to the, to the community and to the board recommendations. And based from what I'm understanding, is more targeting more for scenario one, possibly even omitting those five students and keeping the same exact district that we have right now. As, as mentioned before, scenario one really has nominal impact on, on the capacities, but at the same time, it's more efficient for transportation.
I'm with the chair in that I'm more inclined at this point, when we come to the tenth and less, something changes about adding any additional students to the new district. And if we have to, two years from now, or next year when we discuss this, then move them if we have to, in conjunction with that, so we make one move for all of them at one time, as opposed to do that. Specifically to not take any, not moving any children out of Southwest Elementary's current attendance zone, to leave it unchanged. And then, and then a year from now, when we have to decide to Catherine, then we can decide whether or not we can move additional students into that area, based on our domino effect.
Were there any other options presented by any of the parents that night?
When we had discussions with the parents, all of them were very receptive to, to the redistricting of the school. The one thing that did mention, like we have talked about too, is that scenario three, we took the two students from Meadowview, they were concerned about the capacity as well. They, they, they preferred option one or option two.
Well, I think we were all shocked that it was just, I know the staff and the principals and everybody did a great job of announcing and getting the word out, kind of shocked that there were just so few, which tells me, we're ready.
Yeah.
We're ready.
Yeah, but their crowdedness, they're ready.
They're ready. And one of the things I, I mean, missed, not to mention, is one of the things that is happening too, is we're giving notice far out in advance, and so they realize it's not going to impact them next year, so that kind of slows it down a little bit. And then also, during previous redistricting, community meetings that we've had, there's been some that have been very interesting. I mean, when we went to Richland's High School, or we went to Carolina Forest Elementary, it was a packed house. But then there was other, there was other community meetings that we had about the same level of turnout. Four or five parents come in, and instead of having a big presentation, we sat around the table and showed the maps, because it was that type of a communication. So it's not surprising, but at the same time, we did try to make sure that everybody was aware of it. And we've also posted video of that. Ms. Crowder was there, and they got video of the presentation. So under the redistricting article that's on the news page, on the front of the website, there's a link directly to the presentation where you can see presentations from ours made that night. So we've gotten it out there.
I think that we made that announcement, though, the weekend before, that Friday or Thursday or Friday.
Yes, sir.
That was going to be the following day. So we didn't have a long lead time in putting the information out there, didn't we?
But I can tell you this, we made targeted phone calls to the staff and students at Dixon Elementary.
Sure.
And we also pulled the names of the specific families that would have been impacted by the redistricting for Meadowview and for Southwest El, and called them directly as well. And, and one of the things too, we always, and we did have, we're providing opportunities to communicate with us as well through email and through phone calls and stuff, and we haven't heard anything since that time. So we, we're extending the opportunity for input through this whole process.
Very good. Any other comments on this? Well, we look forward to hearing some information from Barry, and then we'll have this discussion either among ourselves prior to, or with Dr. Collins or Steve, and then on March tenth, we'll entertain whether we decide we want to redistrict at that time. The last item on the agenda today is the North Carolina School Board Association's Legislative Committee. In the past, this past year, Mr. Wiggins served, and it's time for us to decide if we'd like to submit a nomination for that committee. There are two meetings that you have to attend in order to submit your name, to make sure that you can go to both of those meetings. Mr. Wiggins has indicated that he would love to continue to serve. We'd have to nominate him again and fill out the paperwork. There's no guarantee that he would get it, but I think that since he's served, he might, unless somebody else would like to submit their name. And so at this time, I would like there to be a motion to, for someone to submit their name, and preferably, if you would accept Paul's, that someone would nominate him.
Nominate Paul.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Paul, would you like to say anything?
No, just glad to serve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And thank you. Yes, sir.
If you look on the, on the back page regarding, on July the twentieth, is when the committee will assemble to review the survey estimate that will be sent out to every school board member across the state. I've served on this committee before, and have been part of this process. I encourage each of you to please respond, because this is the legislative agenda that's approved by, at the delegate assembly in November that goes to the general assembly. And we get a chance to see the results from every school board, how many responded, and those that didn't. Hopefully, that we will have one hundred percent participation.
And they do let us know, they don't really tell me who doesn't, doesn't respond, but they'll let me know how many did. So please try to respond to that.
We're ready, we have that hundred percent.
You can count.
If there's no other business, thank you for today, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Y'all have a great day.